2022, for future service only. This change will provide emergency medical services employees and firefighters' retirement after 25 years of service at two-thirds of their average final compensation, average of the three highest years of earning. Need a motion?
I move that we approve the change as read.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second at Article 2, be passed as written. The floor is now open for any discussion.
Is this, how does this affect current employees? Does it start from the date of passage or when the policy starts? Or is it from their original date of hire?
According to the article, it starts January 1st.
It would start January 1st, no prior services counted.
Okay.
However, this is where it gets a little complicated. For employees who have prior service that have been in the regular pension plan, there is, they can exchange years. So I think it's two years, correct me if I'm wrong. It's two or three years for one that they can do.
I haven't seen that level of detail.
Yeah. But they, so they can treat it two to get one or three to get one.
But that's not a cost to the employees.
But that's not a cost to us.
Okay.
What are the towns' contributions?
So currently, we pay 10.1 and it would go to 13.4 for our current full-time employees. And then...
13.4%.
Percent of their salary. And that, that will be around 30, between 30 and 36,000 dollars if we were to estimate what that cost would be. And right now, we're at, I can tell you, we're at 69,500, oh, I'm lying. We're at 18,022 dollars and that would go to about 36,000 dollars. The other part of this is some of our, what we consider per diem, they can then become part-time, but there's caveats to that. They have to take at least one shift every week, a regularly scheduled shift, and they cannot refuse to work. So that's the difference between a per diem, which is not covered under pension, and a part-timer who would be covered under pension. They have to commit to coming every week for the entire year, and they can't refuse shifts. We understand people get sick or they go on vacation, but you can't call up and just say, hey, I'm not coming this week. Otherwise, you're not eligible. So we're asking for a commitment. And hopefully, what this will do is get people to commit to taking the shifts. It's just another tool in our toolbox that we can use to entice people to come to work for Waldenboro. Because what was happening in the past was with per diem, like this time of year, oh, I want to make extra money for Christmas, we'll come take shifts. This will entice people to take shifts year-round. And we had to project, I was asked, how can we project the cost of this going forward based on per diem? If 35% of the per diems signed up and did this, that cost is around, between, we're saying 34 and 36,000 dollars, depending on their level, if they're in EMT basic up to a paramedic with five years' experience. So it, you know, all in, you're looking at potentially 36,000 dollars if 35% of those per diems were to come on, and an additional 18 for the full-time employees.
How does this compare to what other towns are doing? I know everybody's in the same boat here.
So, other towns are not offering pensions. Most towns that have a combined fire EMS do offer pensions. C O C is not a town, so it can't offer that pension. So the 25 years and out, and it was originally, our police department's in it, so it's 25 years and out regardless of age. So you're looking at something that will attract young people, because to be honest with you, and Richard could attest to this better, there's a point you're tired. You know, so 25 years and out, if you started at 20, you know, you can have a whole other career. I think it really is going to attract people because we've also, we've already had a couple of our younger people express interest that this is something that would retain and keep them here in Waldenboro. And that's what we need to do because we're in a unique position. We can offer something like that. And we included the firefighters, we have volunteers, and that qualification is, we put it in, I think the select board put it in the question because we are going to be conducting a study to see what the future should look like for the fire department and EMS. Do you combine services? What do you do? How do you make that look? So we put the firefighters in there just so in the future, we wouldn't have to go through this again. And we don't know what that study is going to say. But it was worth taking that step now to save it later on down the road. And as everybody knows, I got asked this question a lot was, why now? You know, why, why do we need it now? Why do, you know, there's got to be people who volunteer or do this or do that. And volunteering is not what it used to be. The ambulance started, the EMS service started out as a volunteer service. We rely on volunteers in our fire department heavily. And people just don't seem to have the time. I mean, we can't find volunteers to sit on a lot of our boards. So it's not, everybody has to think of such a noble service to volunteer to your town. And I, that's, we're not finding that to be a sustainable.
Isn't it also true that we're getting more and more requirements of our volunteers? More and more requirements for equipment, training, safety issues, all of this. It's not just their availability. It's that everything is getting more expensive and more complicated. That adds into the mix.
It does, when you think about the hours of training that go with it to keep people safe. It's a commitment, and the time is difficult. And we always relied on people saying, well, we'll work in this service and then we'll fill in shifts here. We have to start treating this like a career. And we have to start treating it and making it so people will want to come into the career. And I said this for the last several months, I keep saying it, it's always in the newspaper. Our EMS providers could make more delivering packages for UPS than they could delivering patients. And we fixed that. We took that step to address the salary portion of it, which makes us on a level playing field. This puts us over the top. That way, and other agencies will not be able to compete with us because we can offer this when others can't. And that's what I think will really attract and retain the people that we're trying to attract and retain.
So will there be additional full-time fire staff?
Well, I don't know what that study is going to show. That could, that could be something that the study says is that you might have a cross-trained fire EMS. It might say, don't do that. It might say, you're doing great the way you are. We don't know. That study was authorized in October, put out an RFP. I haven't received any response yet. I've talked to a lot of people, but I haven't gotten any responses, written responses yet to that RFP.
Are they partially vested before 25 or do they have to go for 25 years?
They are, you can be partially vested before 25, but there'll be a reduction. And it's based on a percentage and number of years.
A normal vesting period is five years on both involved plans.
Paul? We did, the budget committee met when we discussed this before, but I don't recall the whole picture here. Which employees would be now eligible for the pension plan under this program?
Right now.
That aren't already?
It would be our full-time EMS staff.
Are now eligible?
Will on January 1st be eligible for the special plan. They're already eligible under the regular plan.
They're already in the regular.
They're already in.
It would be switched from regular to the...
To the 3C plan.
It's called the special plan.
Okay. Additionally, unclear is the difference between regular plan and this new plan.
So the regular plan is you can retire, you can work, you retire at your normal retirement peg. Jump in anytime you work. Correct me when I'm wrong. So some people are eligible to retire at 62, some are at...
60.
Well, 60.
The normal retirement age is 60 if you were hired before, I think it's June 30th, 2014. If you were hired after that date, the normal retirement age is 65. And they both have different rates because the main purr sets the rates every year. So every year, we get new rates that we put in the budget. So what she's talking about is the current EMS full-time employees are already in our regular pension plan, which is either 60, retirement age of 60, or 65. And then when they get to that age, they can receive 50% of their highest annual gross wages over three or their third, they have an average of three highest annual salaries. So the police plan is 25 years with no retirement age. You come in, you're in the police plan, work 25 years, and then they take your average highest wage over three, a three-year period, and you get two-thirds of that. So that's the difference until the general's paid. It would be the higher cost to the town. That's what you'd do, employees, if you came in war than when they're in the regular.
And so which, which employees are we now offering the stewardess care? They're setting it full-time.
So it would be full-time EMS employees. And any employee, this is EMS we're speaking about. EMS, it would be any employee that is scheduled on a weekly basis to work at least one shift. And they can't...
They work full-time with EMS employees right now.
And they cannot refuse a shift. So there is a test they have to pass. So they can't say, okay, I'm going to work. They can't sign up for a shift every week for a year and not show up for the shifts.
Okay. So could a person work for 22 years, one day a week, and pay for this pension? And then work for three years full-time and then retire, and have their 25 years, and then retire at two-thirds of their three full-time years? Is that conceivable?
So it's conceivable, but again, at a pension level, at the main purrs, there's a formula that they use to determine that. So they will not get the full benefit if they were full-time all of those years.
Okay.
Will somebody go with that, evidently not?
Well, I'm being a weasel, I am, I don't know.
It does give them years, but it's not like it gives, there is a downside to doing that.
Yeah.
But again, that's something that's calculated at a much higher level up at the state with a formula that I'm not aware of.
So the state main purrs actually runs...
They administer the pension funds.
Okay.
Dr. Hawley?
So if 35% of people become, participate in this and work at least one shift a week, what does that do to your coverage? Does that improve it in availability or is it a loss? Or how does that work out? Maybe we have more people working, more shifts in the...
So I can just share with you what we've experienced since we did the rate increase. So we've had a rate increase in place for about two months now. And I will let Richard speak to what has happened to the schedule since we increased the rates.
Since we increased the rate, we've picked out a lot more people now working shifts. And they're also getting paid the whole shift, you know, per diem. But they're just getting straight on. And our schedule is, compared to all of this, it's not 100%, but it's very close to what it used to be. It's very big.
Do you anticipate losing people because they're obligated to work that one shift a week?
Not at all.
Not at all?
Not at all.
If I may, the upside of this, correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, is that when you've staffed that way, you don't have to turn away transports. And that's where we make our money. So doing this is actually making the department stronger, and it's to the benefit of all of us.
I remember when Fieldcrest was operating, we were doing really well.
We did about $400 a year there.
Right.
And it was close by. And it was mostly federal money, but we made good money.
And that's what people don't realize is that during this downturn, when we didn't have a lot of people covering shifts, we had to turn down transports. So then we're not generating revenue. And just so everybody's aware too, the select board and the budget committee the last two years have really spent a lot of time looking at this. And they made a lot of changes and tried different avenues to attract people. They did a really good job of trying to solve the problem. And we're one of the, I want to say we're one of the leaders that said, hey, there's a problem, let's fix it. And I'm very proud of that.
I remember talking to a firefighter from Bath who said that all of the firefighters are required to be trained as EMTs, to even get in the door. Now, that's a full-time service, but it does make sense to me that in the long run, we want some cross-training to go on. And I wondered if you could comment on whether people might be interested in this? Any idea?
I don't know about Paul's current department, but I can tell you almost, and it's not, I have a few on Waldenboro's department, but I have almost half of my EMS roster of firefighters in one of the towns where they live. So we do have quite a few that are, and when I call them firefighters, mostly I'm not a firefighter, one firefighter, two. But they work in Alzad and all different kind of places.
We have firefighters right now that are traveling from here as far away as two hours to work firefighter EMT jobs. Any other questions? Mr. Scov?
Yeah, the, you said this would apply to firefighters also? And who would that, which type of firefighter, their employee, employee status or...
I'll let Julie answer.
So currently, we have a volunteer fire department. They're not, they're not technically paid a salary.
Right.
So they would be excluded from that unless we make them a paid department. And typically, you don't have a paid department until you have a situation like Bath where you have paid fire EMS or running 24, manning the station 24/7.
Okay. And you did say earlier that this was to set up in case we...
Ever get to that, correct? And that'll all be based on what happens with this study. It, it's a difficult thing because you don't want to deplete one department over the other department. And, you know, we had a lot of very dedicated firefighters filling in EMS, taking EMS shifts because we were so far down as drivers to help out EMS that there was also at times concern, okay, well, if we have to. And luckily, I have two departments that work well together. So that I'm sure things could have changed if we had that issue where we had to get out to a fire and we had people on an EMS shift. But it's, you know, you want to be, you want both staff to the hilt. But finding that balance is difficult. And maybe taking steps like this will entice people to think about careers in both fire, EMS, and police.
And just to point out the wisdom that Julie has exhibited by going to a third party to do the study as opposed to doing it in-house. No one can accuse this board or our town manager of playing favorites. Independent third party looking at facts objectively and making professional recommendations on what we ought to do as a town. That's what we're looking for.
So just to remind myself of the dollar cost, if 35%, we should be lucky, if 35% opt-in, it's only from 18 to 36,000 dollars.
Well, it's, well, it's, that cost, if 35% go in, it's 36,000 dollars. Roughly, somewhere between, I'd say between 34 and 36, depending on what level they're at.
That seems like not a lot of money to me to get what we need.
And then you have to add the other 18 on for the difference between full-timers now who are under one pension system to the other pension system.
And this is per year.
And offset by an additional bill.
Right. It seems like a bargain to me to get what we need and what other towns are struggling with.
Well, you're cheating everybody the same way. You know, you're putting everybody on the same program, or at least giving the opportunity to be on the same program.
Waldenboro?
I'm just, I thought that the difference was 18,000 dollars. So it's 36,000 plus 18. So the total cost of this motion is, yeah. 36 is 18.
54.
54.
No.
Should it?
So it would go up, it would go up about 18,000 dollars. And that's based on a full complement of four full-time positions for a full year. And I'm talking full year here, full year budget, not a gap year budget.
34,000 dollars.
Any other questions? Comments? Hearing no more questions or comments, we are now going to vote on Article 2. All those who are in favor of passing Article 2, please signify by raising your orange card. Thank you. Those who are opposed, signify the same way.
God, it's unanimous. Write this in the record books.
Article 2 passes. At this time, I'll be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn the special town meeting. Second. It's been moved in seconded that we adjourn the special town meeting. All those in favor, please signify. Thank you. Those opposed, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Been a while, hasn't it?
For the fun, I'm sorry it wasn't more exciting. Bye, John. Bye, Santa.
I feel so far away from everyone.
You are.
Presentation, I see we have one, the public hearings, any adjustments? See agenda? See one?
Oh, I do have one.
Oh, okay.
We have to authorize the sale of the old ambulance. New business.
I'd make a motion, put that under new business, 11, 12 point...
10.2?
Sorry, 10.2, yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Paul has a paper? Citizens comments? Everyone left us. Selective comments, Paul?
Just one. We talked at the last meeting about a meeting with Tom Schmilk of the Maine Forest Service, talked about Ramtail Mods. He's available on February 9th, which is a Wednesday. He's been communicating with Nancy Dale, and I'm just wondering if the board is amenable to setting that aside as a date to meet with him? I don't know what the schedule is for the meeting room, Julie, but...
I checked it today, it was fine.
It's good. Okay, so we can tell him that, is there a particular time that he would suggest?
I think 6 o'clock works for people.
6 o'clock? Okay. I'll tell Nancy. Thank you.
Colonel?
The only thing I have is, I was looking at Facebook tonight, and there was a picture of one of our selectmen and one of our attendees in a meeting tonight. But about the skating rink, I went to the meeting about, what, about two weeks ago? That Mac, Mac, yeah. And there weren't a lot of people there, but there was some, some good interest. And so he said that the public works, we're going to prepare a place. He had bought a liner, and that's what you saw in the background. And so when the weather gets right, they'll flood it and ice it. And they're hoping for volunteers to help keep it ready to go and cleaned off. So pat them on the back. That's something that our citizens wanted.
Well, sorry, Paul left because he has all the particulars that maybe you do too. The Santa Claus is sending to town, there's always the Sunday before Christmas downtown where the old tree, they used to like the old tree that grew, outgrew us. But that's always a big festivity, and they have Little Village set up in prime time. It's, they're usually lots and lots of children out there. So it's kind of funny, if you want some cookies, show up Sunday. And I don't have the time, and I can't, I just thought Paul would be here, you know? But anyway, so that's, just one other little thing that I was reading earlier about, and it doesn't, it affects Waldenboro's people indirectly in that the state paying 55% of school funding to that was voted in by the legislature when I was teaching. I've been retired 14 years, and it wasn't at the very end of 2014. So it's taken a long time for that to happen, but it's, they go in the last session and that would finally, they would finally follow that law that they passed. So that helps everyone as far as taking some of the burden off of property, tent, of property. And that, Brendan's sharing his version too, so that just helps everybody. It made me happy, it was like a Christmas present.
I was going to tell the fire department Santa too. So it's Sunday, summer 19th, 6 p.m. It would be escorted down Jefferson Street by fire trucks, it would rain. And also be giving candy to kids and they would talk Santa. Thanks to the Walden Fire Department, putting cement on, it's great.
It's really nice to be seeing that.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, I don't know if you saw, but Santa and his elves did put up the ice cream. It's on Facebook, it must be true. We just, there's, I believe, Will, there's some minor adjustments that have to be made, and then we just have to wait for nature to freeze it. So that's good. It looks, today was the last day to sign up for food baskets. We have eclipsed ninety families for Christmas food baskets. I do not know the exact number of the toys, coats, and boots, but I know it's over forty. So over forty families. So the pickup for the baskets and for the toys, coats, and boots will be next Wednesday from one to five.
So, the Christmas baskets, will you open up?
We ordered for ninety.
Okay, and you've got ninety people?
We will, we will eclipse ninety, so we have a backup plan. We have, I, I will say that Main Street Market in Bamariscada has been extremely generous with us. Rennie's has been generous, Val's eggs. You know, we're trying to keep it local as best we can. But we've, we've, we've had a lot of good response from the community to dropping off toys. We had a little bit of a surge, I had to order some more coats and boots today. And hopefully, they will be in by this week. We have forty-eight requests for families, I just got the updated number, forty-eight requests from families for toys, coats, and boots. So I don't know what the total number of children are that we're serving, but there was, I ordered a lot of boots. And if you need a boy size eight, they are just about impossible to find for snow boots. And we did have a lovely lady in town whose name escapes me, make some hats and drop them off, so. Karen Anne's been great. Karen Anne and Tanja really have done a yeoman's job of sorting, separating, and making sure the toys are getting to the right people, the right stacks. We couldn't have had our meeting, even if we wanted to, in the other room, because it is Santa's workshop at the moment.
On to the consent calendar. If somebody like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? New business, ARPA funding, essential worker pay.
So as you are aware, the town office and all of its services operated throughout COVID, through the ARPA funding, we are allowed to give essential worker pay to our employees. And I'm sure you can read in the paper, there's a lot of different ways to do it, how towns have come up with it, all differ a little bit. One of the things that we looked at was how do you, how do you reward and say, not only a thank you, but how do you make it meaningful? It, it's not so much a thank you for working as it is a recognizing the contributions that the employees are doing, and, and also trying to pay what, what the economy is driving to attract and retain people. So that's, when we were looking at this, is, is what are you doing? So, you know, I read just recently in the paper, some town gave, you know, three thousand dollars to every employee, or, you know, they, they picked a number. We're fortunate in that we anticipated only half of our ARPA funding in our budget. And of what we anticipated, we received thirty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars more than what we anticipated it to be. So there was some train of thought that we would take that ARPA money that was not anticipated, because most of the ARPA money that we anticipated went towards the EMS increases, if you'll recall. So it went to EMS and some police funding. So what we'd like to do, or what was suggested, was tying this to something meaningful, not just to say thank you, but it was, what is a good way to come up with how each employee could, who was essential during this time, which is every employee, because we were open the entire time. How can we take a portion of that money and equitably distribute that? And one of the ways to do that was to use the six point two percent is what the inflation rate was, it's what the consumer prices, Dex was saying, and we came up with that six point two percent number. And that it could be a one-time payment that is not subject to pension in order to supplement the employees, the essential workers' pay. And what it would do was, it gave it some type of payment, it wasn't an arbitrary three thousand dollars to everybody, it's based on their annual, their annual salary. Well, actually, technically, it's based on half, a half year of their annual salary, because it could be from January first to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Does that make sense to you, what I just told you?
And what's the number on that?
The number is, it comes out to be thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-one cents, of which we're using thirty, we could use thirty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars of the ARPA money that was not anticipated, which leaves us at eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-one cents.
Which would come from?
Which could come from the ARPA money that's still coming, you could use ARPA money again, or we could also use.
We could repay ourselves back with it.
Correct, with the other ARPA money. Or that's what I would recommend, because we, we know we are getting that in the beginning of next year. Right, well, that would, that would be an automatic. I mean, but we could also, you know, I could take it from salaries and wages, there is some room, I, I could move things around. I, I just think it's, it seemed to me, if you're basing it on the half-year, it's based on ten thousand, forty hours for the employees who work forty hours a week. And, you know, some of our staff only works thirty-two hours a week. So it's based on a half year going forward.
Could have more money to make them more bonus, I guess?
Well, that was one of the discussions you can have. Originally, I had said that perhaps for people who were making over thirty dollars an hour, the increase would be half of that. There was some discussion from at least one of the employees that that affected, that the increases of everything in, with the cost of everything going up affect them just as much as it affects everybody else. So. Well, again, that's, and that's, that's, you know, like I said, that's, that's, that's one person's, and we're trying to be fair across the board. That's totally up to, like, you guys can modify that, that would just make the number go down, we can have more discussion on that, it's, it's up to you.
I'd make a motion at least to have something to talk about. And the motion would be to reflect what you have indicated is your suggestion, Julie, that we supplement the salaries, the compensation of our, of all of our town employees, including from the top down, our town manager, our finance director, everybody. Fifty percent of their annual salary, and the amount applied to that would be six point two percent.
Not fifty percent of the salary, but fifty percent of the time.
You'd apply the six point two percent to fifty percent of their annual salary. So it takes them from the period of January one, twenty-twenty-two to June thirty of twenty-twenty-two. So does that capture three?
Yes, that's fifty percent of the salary.
Well, I should, I just.
That's why it's six point two percent.
I just want to say, it's not every employee, because EMS got a significant increase.
Ah.
So it's not every single employee.
But I think Paul's making the recommendation that we do everybody.
I'm, I'm suggesting that everybody, everybody, you know, because they're all, we didn't, we didn't increase the compensation for EMS because it was a special supplement for them. We increased it because they had earned that increase, in my opinion. Just like everybody has earned a supplemental to their, to their salary, based on the conversation we're having tonight. But that's, that's what I would make the motion.
That's going to be significantly different number.
So you'd excluded EMS from the thirty-nine thousand?
Yes. Because they had gotten a significant.
Pay increase.
Pay increase.
Is it just EMS?
But you have to realize, they got a significant pay increase when we redid the budget initially, if you'll recall. And then, just in October, they got another significant increase in heaven.
I hear what you're saying. Okay, I, I guess I restate the motion to exclude EMS from that calculation, because in essence, they've already received supplemental recognition for the incredibly hard work they've put in during the last two years.
And this isn't for back, going back, this is for.
This is for going, this is for the period of January one, twenty-twenty-two to June thirty of twenty-two.
Correct.
And how you allocate that, whether it's month-to-month, or it's going lump sum, I leave that to your discretion.
I, I still have concern about, you know, if it's a gift, and it sounds to me like it's a gift, that everybody get the same gift. Those who made more money, who already have more money, are getting a, a bigger gift than those who may work just as hard, but I don't.
Haven't been here long.
Right, haven't been here long, or any different salary, or lower salary, if it's just a gift, you know? I don't know, I don't.
Well, I don't think it's a gift.
Well, it's a bonus.
I don't like the idea of it being a gift. It's a essential worker, it, it, it is a bonus.
Right, but it's.
It's, it's, it's not a gift, and it's, I, I think you have to tie it to something.
But I know, I, I tie it the other way. I think if I had to tie it, but I'd rather them all have, get the same gift than giving the people with more, more, because it's the people who have less that need more. And they are as essential as, you know, some of the, as we, as we found out, some of the essential workers during the pandemic were those people who worked on a high salary. You know, were the grocery store workers, were the, those people who didn't have a lot of money, and they, they became far more essential than the CEOs or the supervisors.
I, yeah, I, I don't know how you want to, because some people would say that their job was riskier, I.
Well, that is, and I think, I mean, the same thing.
Sorry, Colonel?
Well, the, the only comment I'd like to make is, the people that are making more have been here longer and are in leadership positions. They're the ones that have to, I think, in my estimation, they, they're responsible for everybody else and making sure that everything is done the right way. And so if they, you know, that's a fourth of what it was, that's, and I understand what you're saying, and I like it, but.
Never get, yeah.
Yeah, but I.
And they tend to be the ones who get the work done, not the ones who say, go do the work.
Well, they were, they were.
They were, yeah, but.
Anyway, that's my comment.
But they, they get that bonus.
Yeah.
And I also want to just point out, none of this is based on overtime, there is no overtime included in any of this.
So just to recap, I think what Paul's trying to say is, anybody that was even in the office, in the office staff, and should get this as well, correct?
They would receive the supplement, yep.
Who, who did you play, you played not EMS, but everybody else, or is there anybody else?
Public Works, transfer station, Police Department, and, and the office staff.
Oh, you did have.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you didn't.
No, no, it was.
Okay, and that's what Paul said.
Right.
Everybody's included, except for EMS, okay. Is that correct, Paul?
Yes, and, and the funding would come from ARPA.
And that would be.
Thirty-one thousand, three fifty-six from ARPA. And then the remaining eight thousand, four seventy-nine, forty-one, I, I think, we should, I, I agree with Julie, we should take that out of future ARPA funding. So it could be a loan from the general fund that's repaid with ARPA funding, or it's, the ARPA funding comes on time and is taken care of in that way.
I, just to give you an idea, I mean, I handed this out before, but, I mean, it, it is, it's, it's a hard, it's a hard thing to, when you, when you go to figure out how to make it all work.
And then the purpose of this, the extra money is, I mean, just, you just.
So one of the things you could do is, you could, you would essentially. Game three. So I, so I think it is, we have to be able to say it's moving forward, not in the past. How do you label it? A bonus works well, because then we're not paying pension on it.
Yeah, yeah.
So the town's obligation is that amount, you know, and, and you have to pay, you know, the employee has to pay the withholding. It's just a matter of how you move forward. And it's a way to say thank you to the people who worked through the entire time, say thank you, we appreciate you. I don't like the word gift.
Yeah, I don't either.
You know?
But a bonus is like.
And we have to.
It's thought of as a gift, when you get, when I got a Christmas bonus, I thought it was a gift.
Well, right, but it's, it's covering that six-month period. And the idea of it not being in a weekly paycheck is, then it's not subject to all of these, these things.
That, I think, if it's labeled as a gift, the voters may think, but why is the town giving out money?
No, you don't call it a gift, it's a bonus, but a bonus is a gift.
And, and I think, I think what's happening, but I will tell you, I think from the employee's stance and how they feel about it is, I think what they feel about it is, they see increases all over, around us. And they're looking at it and saying, but we don't get anything. And, and I think they're not going to look at it as a gift, they're going to look at it as, it's something we've earned. And I think that's the mindset.
Well, to me, they're a bonus, what I meant, they're a bonus.
Right.
In my way of thinking that they're synonymous.
Right.
But I, I understand, a bonus is good.
And, and, and I, and part of the reason with the six point two-two was because that's what Social Security is supposed to be giving as their increase, you know, because of, it's tied to the inflation. as their increase, you know, because of, it's tied to the inflation. It, it just, it, it made sense. And, and that's why at first, when I put this together, I was like, anybody making over this much money gets 3.1%. I have no problem going back to that. That has, I have no issue with that, but it, it was just trying, it was a, a way that was tied to something. And I see what you're saying about it'd be nice to give everybody the same. But it, it.
Right, that wrong motion is still a second. I'll say it. Is there any more discussion?
I, I, I would just, I'd relax. I would call it COVID supplemental, a COVID supplemental payment. And that's how it's intended, to compensate and to recognize the extra additional effort the people have exerted to keep the town going and keep the whole, the community going into safety.
Any more discussion? All is in favor? Well, you must have to. One, none, completely opposed, and one upstairs. Good?
And this won't happen in this year or happen in the future? And technically, we had already anticipated, like I said, the ARPA money, but because this was not put in our budget, that's why, and it just makes good sense to have a public discussion when you're doing something like this. I think it's really important. So the ambulance, this is fun news, guys. So. No, but we sold it for so much more than what Richard was going to get for it. So. I did.
Awesome.
So I wanted to share with you. So it is a 2010 Ford E350 PL Custom with a 167-inch box. And Richard had done what typically had been done in the past when they went to sell ambulances, is you call around, people say, oh yeah, I'll give you $2,000 for it. I said, well, let me put it on the website. So we went on govdeals.com, we got $9,000 for it.
Wow.
So you just tonight have to authorize the sale for $9,000.
To whom?
It's going, well, we don't have to do it to whom, but it is going to a town in Mexico.
Wow.
And they're flying in Friday to Boston and they're going to drive the ambulance back to Mexico.
Not Mexico, Maine.
No, not Mexico, Maine, Mexico, south of the border, the country. So. We, well, well, we already have the money. So the way these govdeals work is you pay govdeals and govdeals then.
Gets a percentage?
Well, they, they get a percentage above what the sale price is, so you're not losing money.
So we're not paying the percentage, the buyer.
We're not, the buyer pays the percentage.
Yeah. You're good.
So Wolda Borough, the name of Wolda Borough has been taken off the ambulance. And that money then will go, as we did with the fire department when we sold the hearse, that'll go back into their capital account, which is really exciting because the SUV from the police department, our new SUV is coming. So the old one will then go over to the EMS department that you approved and become the fly car for the medic. So the rewapping of the fly car for the medic will be covered, well covered by that money. So Richard would have been short if he'd just gotten $1,000 or $1,500 for that ambulance. And now he will be getting, well, the department will be getting more money to use in their capital program. So the fly car for the ambulance is important for a medic because if the medic can take the fly car and join, another ambulance isn't leaving. So if we have a medic that has to go on a call, take the fly car, it reduces the amount of miles on the ambulance, but it also allows us then to still run a crew on a transfer and a crew on a 911 call. And have a medic here.
That all worked out well.
Make sure that the heater in that ambulance works well because they're going to need it. Our friends from Mexico show up, they're going to need a heater. Is it going to make it? Will it get there? I hate to ask the question.
Oh, yeah, there's only that many miles on it?
Again, like I said, we do take good care of our stuff.
Yeah, we do.
We do. That was one of the rebuilds. If that was the year that they had some issues, but it has been rebuilt, those issues were addressed.
Yep.
But again, that was a night, you know, that's our oldest ambulance. And the body styles, the body styles have changed, how the ambulance is. We now go through where we want all the boxes to look the same so that if you're in the ambulance here or that one, everything's in the same place. It's displayed out differently. The box is great, I will tell you, PL Custom is like the Cadillac of all boxes on an ambulance. We are sad to see that one go, but again, it's a very, it's also a very heavy ambulance. So, no, but it will make it.
Okay.
Oh, would somebody like to make a motion for the sale of the 2010 Indos?
For $9,000.
For $9,000. Is there a second? Any more discussion?
I hope we hear some stories, doesn't that mean?
All is in favor?
And I just have one other update. I was asked again today by Jefferson to provide more information. I was asked to provide number of calls to Friendship, number of calls here. I provided that, then they asked for the, the, the cost of calls. You know, I, I gave them what we billed, but I cannot, I know what they're trying to do and, and if I give them these numbers, we're on a calendar year. The calls are on, well, they're on a calendar year, calls are on a calendar year. Our budget is on a fiscal year. We made changes to that budget. I told the town administrator out there once again, and this is, I've asked, they canceled me coming to their last meeting, I again asked to come to their meeting. I said, I'll answer any questions you have, we need to have an actual sit down. I said, but the first is approaching, it's the 14th of December. And I reiterated that this is not a negotiation. You either want us to service your community or you don't want us to service your community. And they appear to be having some, you know, they're, they're, they're asking bits and pieces of here and there to try to construct, what I believe they're trying to construct is their version of the numbers and what they mean with no context. And that's dangerous because then you convince yourself that you're right. They need to understand, they can look at any number they want, but the bottom line is we increased wages. There is a cost to doing service. You know, they don't want to hear what our write-offs were of the $500,000. They don't want to hear that, you know, there's 71 calls that we go, respond to that we don't get to bill for. So, so they're not asking for the, those numbers. So I did not provide any numbers because the numbers are meaningless without the explanation from us of, of what goes into them. So I reiterated that select board was very clear, it's a non-negotiable, we're not negotiating.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
And we're being fair.
We're being fair to all the town.
Now that I know it's 471 calls that we can get paid for at $200 a lot.
71. Well, but 200 is a low number, so let's, let's, let's be, let's, you know, if we're charging $600 for an intercept, what's a real call, what's a call? And if we're taking a call and not going on a transport, that's a $1,000 call. So, you know, you have to look at that. And what we also have to look at is if we bill $1,000 and insurance pays three, if you would like to, if, if you want to do a per-call thing with, with, with Jefferson, I will be more than happy to take that $700 and, and bill them the difference between what the cost of call billed was versus what the insurance paid, and they can make up the difference. And they'll look at the $110,000 and say, thank you very much. Because this was a very fair way of doing it. We're not making it any better than they are. So I, I think.
What was their percentage of our budget, operating budget, because in a friendship, she was like 15?
I, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it was less.
Yeah, I, I.
They're at 110 and they were at 149. And, and we did have a really good meeting last night with Friendship, they invited us and, and.
They get it, they just have to explain it to their, their voters.
And I said we would, I would be more than happy to come back at a public, one of their, you know, last night was a public meeting, but at one of their regularly scheduled town meetings and have an open discussion with them. Again, I just would like the opportunity to go to Jefferson and have this conversation, which has been stymied. So I keep hearing anecdotally unhappiness, but, and then I get these emails that ask a lot of questions that aren't really relevant, you know? What were your totals in 2019? 2019's gone, we've changed the model and, and we have to move on and I think that's where we're at. And the only other thing that I have an update on, I'm sorry, I forgot, but it's been a, it's been a rough week, first two days back. We're not going to have MAX for a couple of weeks. And so I picked up where he left off on the fire painter grant. So we are going to apply for a pumper tanker to the tune of $750,000. And that application is due Friday. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that I was applying for that grant.
Was that in the schedule to purchase regardless?
That's in the schedule to purchase. It's in the schedule that it's coming up. And as you know, it takes sometimes three or four times, you know, we did it with the, we got close with the latter.
Can we still put in for that?
No, no, that's gone by. We got close with the latter, so now this next truck, we're trying, so this will be our second attempt. Second, third, and fourth attempts seem to be the charm, so I just wanted to let you know that we will be applying for that. What I got. Sorry, I got long.
In the old business, we don't see any agendas, items for the agenda.
Are we going to meet on the 28th?
Totally up to you.
Mr. Chairman?
It's up to you guys. It's totally up to you guys, whatever you want to do. If you don't want to have a meeting, we won't, we'll wait till January. It's up to you guys.
There's no point in having a meeting just to have a meeting.
Nope, unless we get stuff to do.
Yeah.
I mean, I will be honest with you, that's the way of people, most of the people are away that week.
I mean, if something comes up.
We have not taken a meeting off in two.
Right.
And a half, maybe three years.
Other than Thanksgiving.
No, we did not, we have not. We are, you are a dedicated group. You are the most dedicated group of select board members I've ever had.
Well, I do not have a meeting unless something really, like an emergency comes up where we absolutely have to meet, make a decision of some kind.
I second that.
All was in favor?
Well, I don't get a vote, do I?
All right, would somebody like to motion to adjourn?
I'm a, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All was in favor?
We just have to sign your list?
Yes, I do, and some of it is really, 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 really.